To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Johnson. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Carroll.
Here.
Alderman Stowe.
Here.
Alderman Baccara.
Here.
Alderman Hunt.
Here.
Alderman Genetic.
Here.
Alderman Tislydis.
Here.
Alderman Dempsey.
Here.
Alderman Yaman.
Here.
Alderman Raiden.
Present.
Alderman Schur.
Here.
Alderman Henry.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell.
Here.
Alderman Delibro.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
I declare a quorum. I'll entertain consideration of previous minutes from the October 10th, last month.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Carr, second by Mr. Josh Schurt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Public session, Mr. Janetti, do you have your hand up?
Yes, sir. Joseph Janetti, Two Gracie Lane, Ansonia, Connecticut. Just want to congratulate everyone and wish you all good luck. Eighteen years I served at this same table. And I just want to thank everyone, the citizens of Ansonia, for having faith in me, for voting for me, and coming up with some of my stuff and supporting me. It's not an easy job, it's a thankless job that we all do here. And I always thought I did what was best for the city. And I tried my best. It was an honor, and it really was. Eighteen years is a long time. And Trish was there before I was, and I miss you, Trish.
I miss you too, Joseph.
Thank you. I'd like to thank my three children, Alyssa, Christopher, and Kelly. They were little when I took over this position. And I'm a little nervous, excuse me. And they used to see their father go on a meeting all the time. And I remember my youngest crying, why did he gotta leave? I came home with candy or something, it made her smile and laugh. And it was awesome. And my wife Kaye, she motivated me. There's times I wanted to resign, I didn't want to come to meetings. She told me, get your butt out the door, that's what you signed up for. We'll serve our city. And I thank her. Again, thank you all, and good luck. Okay, public session, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
Jonathan? We just need name and address for the public record, please, Jonathan.
My name is Jonathan Palmieri. My address is 134 Jackson Street, Ansonia, Connecticut. I'm here today to present my Eagle project, which I hope to get approved. I have three extra packets, which I'm gonna hand out, if anybody would like to take them. So you can walk yours along.
Okay.
Who would like them?
You start with Randy there, we'll pass them around. Just give them to the first man there.
I want to tell him, he's on the street.
Okay, that's fine.
My plan for my Eagle project, which is gonna take place in Fountain Lake, here in Ansonia. I've planned to power wash the deck, because we're gonna reconstruct the deck, which unfortunately has rails broken off, and is also a safety hazard due to half of it is in water. So rails built on this deck is a main concern. We're also gonna replace the floorboards, sorry. And also try to get rid of a tree, which is growing in the middle of this floorboard, and prevent it from ruining the future board that we're building. The safety roll measurements are gonna be thirty by twenty. And also, we're also gonna put rails on the handicap ramp. We're gonna reframe the opening deck where the tree has grown in. And we're all gonna build a bench, so people could sit on this deck. We're gonna clean the area around it. Unfortunately, I only have one, but this is what the rails plan to look like, a normal rail, safety rail. Also the bench, a couple nice benches on the deck for good seating. Also in the back of the packet, it tells you what I ought to go through. I'll go through this briefly. I have to get it approved, just while I'm here tonight. Any permits I have to go through, which I'm not sure yet, I still have to find it if I need a permit for building. I have to get this project funded, I need supervision, adults there, like my dad and other, safety, such as safety goggles, or glasses, gloves, et cetera. And the project's execution approval, which I hope will be signed up. That's really all I have to present tonight.
Okay, Jonathan, that's awesome, and we totally admire the Eagle Scout program. I'm sure the mayor's office will be helping you with anything.
Any help you need, you let me know, Jonathan. Thank you.
Mr. Carroll, please.
Don't go away.
Hang on, Jonathan.
I talked to you earlier on the board, and I'm a member of the Seymour Land Trust, who, the city owns this property, but the Seymour Land Trust manages it for us. I talked to your dad, he's gonna contact the president. I fully support this, as a Board of Aldermen. And I'll get you the information, your dad will get the information on the Seymour Land Trust and present it to them. But, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I don't know if you wanted a motion, or to waive the permit fees for this?
If you'd like to make a motion, I think we can act on it.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the permit.
Do I have a second, please, Mr. Frank Delibro? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. On the public record.
I thank you, and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Henry, and then me.
Do you have a schedule for this, this year or next year?
I hope to get it going by next year, March and April, before August, because that's when I turn eighteen, I have to do this before I turn eighteen. But, March or April would be good.
I'm next, Randy. Jonathan, one other piece of advice, I know Home Depot does do donations to this type of project, I think Sheila O'Malley knows somebody down there at the Derby Home Depot, so Sheila O'Malley from our Economic Development Office here in the City Hall will be able to help you with that as well, so use your resources here as well. So, Mr. Carroll.
To help the Board of Aldermen out, since I will probably be involved in this project, not directly, but as a Seymour Land Trust, I can always advise the Aldermen on the progress and what's happening up there, as it progresses and starts the project.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, good job, Jonathan, good luck with it. Okay, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Is there any, ah, yes, Mr. Egan, please. Probably haven't memorized, but name and address for the public record, please, sir.
Michael Aiken, 103 Bent Street. First off, I'd like to congratulate all of you that have been re-elected to your positions. And I'd also like to thank those that are leaving the Board of Aldermen, and thank you for the years that you did put in here. I know that it takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, and it's all your own time, too, so thank you. I think you that are remaining here, I think you have one of the biggest challenges that the city has ever faced. I think that it's time for us to get combined, not only with our services, but look into the future that the towns and cities get combined. There's been a, an election just held, and there's one party that's in, there's no reason why you can't get together with other towns and combine a lot of services as a first step. Looking forward to combining the cities. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Third time, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Hearing none, seeing none, public session is closed. Public official session, Mayor Cassetti, please.
Good evening, members of the Board of Aldermen, and residents of the great city of Ansonia. First, I want to congratulate the youth fourteen Connecticut State Football Champions. These guys are youths, and let me tell you, they put on a real good performance on Saturday. I want to welcome their head coach, Greg Soldier, Kentey Douglas, Shane Edmonds, Heath Gifford, parents, family, friends, what a phenomenal team effort! What a phenomenal team effort! And what a great football legacy we have here in this city. These children are carving out a path for another high school championship football team. They will move on to the regionals. And I'd like to introduce the President of the Football League, Keith Maynard, to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this honor, for these kids and coaches, along with the parents. I'm just gonna go very, very quickly here. These kids have been working out since August, August 1st, ninety-degree heat, hot, what have you. And this is where they got us so far, with the potential of two more games. Hopefully, we're back here in December with some more hardware. These kids are dedicated, hard-working, committed. The parents, the parents have bought into what the coaches are trying to achieve, not only as football players, making them young men. And not only in school, but if there's any other issues at home, the parents, the kids are there to help out the parents. Sometimes hearing it from a coach other than a parent, it goes a long way. We're fortunate enough to have some speakers come in last week, trying to prepare these kids for the game, as to what they could expect, what their, what their legacy is gonna be. And those speakers did pretty well talking to them, and I think it sunk in, because the way they played on Sunday, it was very beneficial. The coaches, these coaches are the hardest-working youth coaches, I'm gonna say, in the state of Connecticut, if not the country. These guys, they go out, they watch film on Monday night, they're away from their families, this is youth, you know, but they just have the dedication, the passion, the desire, the fire. Coach Greg, he calls his kids the night before a game to make sure they're home for curfew. The parents buy into this, you know, and it's not only about football. We have, throughout the program, we have six kids right now who are being considered, and it's just consideration, because they have to review the report cards that are gonna be honor scholar athletes, which are carrying a ninety-six point grade, grade point average or higher, which... So, it is football, it is Ansonia, Ansonia and football go together, but at the youth level, it's also the education. And again, we strive, we push, and these are the results that we get. So, again, I'd like to thank the Board of Aldermen, the mayor, everyone involved, for having us tonight, and congratulations to everyone here also, on the reelection.
Could you recognize, could you recognize everything?
Yes, I will. We have Coach Will Saunders. We have Coach Chuck Albea. We have Coach Jeff Johnson. Coaching Vice President Brian Picorillo. Chris Godfrey, who, Chris Godfrey kinda stepped in for Brian, Brian's coaching, and Brian usually does the equipment and all that type of running around, so Chris Godfrey, who was our eight U head coach, he stepped up and took that, so Brian could concentrate on coaching. We also, I don't see him here, Frank DeShane, this is his first year here, he used to coach, his job didn't allow him to coach, he came back wanting to help out, he helped out on the eight U team. Our eight U season was over, he jumped on board, started helping out. This guy, he went, two weeks ago, we're playing a game, he went to go scout the other team. He, this is what we need to do as a team, and that's what I mean about the commitment and the dedication. And he offered last week to go to Massachusetts to go scout Chicopee. But we've already had some stuff on Chicopee, because we played them already, and yes, we did beat them, so, it's just part of the dedication that it goes into, you know, being a successful program. Team Mom Jenny Romanowski, I don't see her, but... And we also have Chicago Rivers, newly-elected Board of Aldermen, who is the assistant vice president. And that's all we have, so...
Rich.
Oh, I'm sorry, our equipment manager, Rich Romanowski. Whoever he is, so, I don't want to take any more of your time, thanks again, we appreciate it.
Thank you all, guys. This is the game offer, the state championship game, wanna give that to you?
I'm gonna have it in my office.
All boys signed it?
Oh, guys, thank you. It'll be in my office. I apologize, I forgot the two water boys.
Yeah, that's right.
Kevin Godfrey and Connor Arnold.
Thank you, thank you very much. I also want to congratulate the Ansonia youth cheerleaders on winning another state championship. Now, they will be on to the regionals. The Division Eight, and Twelve, and Fourteen youth, all won, and will go to Rhode Island to win the regionals. Congratulations to Brad Zeeler. President Crystal Jowman, Vice President Amy Benjamin, the Chair Coordinating. I also, let's congratulate the Ansonia girls soccer team, the division champions for youth fourteen and youth twelve. Thank you to all the coaches, players, family, friends, and volunteers. Ansonia's achievements in athletics is unprecedented. I don't know if anyone here was at the Pinky Silverbird Boxing Tournament on Saturday night at the Armory, but we had more than six hundred adults participating in the attend, in attend, and also in attendance. Derek, wherever you are, I hope you aren't listening. It is truly amazing to see all the children competing, and even more special to watch them win their belts. The looks in their eyes was priceless. Next, I want to recognize all that this group of Aldermen has accomplished over the last two years. We may have had our differences, but at the end of the day, every single member of this board worked to put the city and the taxpayers first, and you should all be very proud of what you have accomplished. Together, we have lowered and stabilized taxes for two years, ushered in a period of economic growth, bringing jobs and investment to our city, and in the process, made city government more accessible to the people. Together, we have recharged Ansonia, and like one of my favorite bands, Boston, would say, "It's more than a feeling." We are beginning to get more objective signs of just how successful our efforts have been here, and I am proud to announce that our assessor, Marcia Vannell, is now projecting a gross increase in our grant list next year in the amount of ninety-one million dollars. That's thanks to you, and all those who believe in giving Ansonia a fighting chance. And now, I would like to acknowledge some of the Aldermen who will not be with us. Their presence in these halls will be missed. Their time and dedication and love for this city will never be forgotten. Sixth Ward Alderman, Pat Henry. Fifth Ward Alderman, Joan Raiden. And third Ward Alderman, Joe Janetti, who you heard from, and Denise Hunt. We thank you for your service, thank you very much. A little later tonight, my staff is going to be discussing a tiny grant they have been working on for the Hilltop area.
Not yet, not yet, Mayor.
Mr. Henry, I guess you could say, better late than never. I have a tiny sticky note that hangs in a special place in my office, and it has been there for four years. The sticky note says, "I wish I could be more like Pat Henry." I have always wondered who wrote that. Maybe tonight, the author will finally come forward. Now, I want to make you all aware that this year's inauguration will take place at Emmett O'Brien Technical School for the first time in the city's history, on Thursday, November 30th, at 7:00 PM. Following the next day, Friday, December 1st, will be our annual tree lighting. Details will be on our webpage. Please remember, we have a box of toys for needy children located downstairs in City Hall. Thank you all, and God bless you, enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday, thank you very much.
Are there any questions of the Aldermen from Mayor Cassetti, please? Mr. Blackwell, please.
Mr. Mayor, what time is the tree lighting service start?
I think 5:30.
5:30?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the mayor from the Aldermen, please?
And Sid.
None? Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Corporation Council, John Marini, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Behind the scenes, in terms of legal, we're working on several items. Number one, with the city clerk, we're preparing the new ordinances that were passed, assigning numbers, and preparing a final publication of the newspaper. As you remember, they will go into effect December 1st by vote of the board. Additionally, we're working behind the scenes to finalize the agreement for the sale of the ATP Palmer Building. Remember, that closing will only occur once site approval has been obtained. The developer's looking to enter into a signed agreement before submitting that site approval, so that looks to be finalized within the coming month. And additionally, we're going to be sitting back down with the owners of 65 Main Street, this is for our police station project, and talking about what direction we can proceed in, in the best interest of the city, for the acquisition of the property. Additionally, as the mayor mentioned, we have been hard at work for a slightly innovative approach to signage during the Hilltop area. Generally, it's not done to have signage specific to one area of the city versus another, but I think we have a solution that the Aldermen will be happy with. Mr. President, this is all for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. Are there any questions of the Aldermen from Mr. Marini, please? None? Well, okay, John, thank you. Sheila O'Malley, Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. On the grant, on the grant list, the, I just want to mention that the Ansonia Housing Authority, Steve Nikano, is, is going to be, excuse me, submitting an application for what's called a VASH grant, it's Veterans Assistance and Supportive Housing, through HUD. And the reason that's so important is because it's going to be, if successful, it will help with veterans, their hous, not only their housing, but any of their special needs or care that is provided through the Veterans Administration. So we're hopeful we're gonna get that grant, and Steve will probably be updating you as, as he goes through that process. We have a few grants in the hopper, but one of them is, and I've spoken about this before, is Community Connectivity Grant, which we did a safety audit, we worked hard that day, we went up and down Main Street, looking at what needed to be repaired or fixed, and what could be, what kind of aesthetic changes we could make to our Main Street, so fingers crossed, we're still waiting on that, and probably, within the next couple of weeks, we'll hear on that. So that will kinda change the look and feel of Main Street, and the mayor wants to, would like to do some sidewalk reparations, along with everything else, if we're fortunate enough to get that grant. Wakeley Avenue, the DOT had some additional changes they wanted to make to our bid specs, so we extended the bid to the 28th. We had about seventeen contractors, that came to the pre-bid.
Mandatory.
Mandatory pre-bid, so we're hoping to get some good numbers back on the Wakeley Avenue project, and we're hoping to get that started as soon as we award, if the weather permits. PEC School, we also had a good turnout for PEC School, about thirteen contractors, four bids were submitted. We opened up bids yesterday. Standard demolition is the apparent low bidder, although we have some questions for the apparent low bidder, so we'd like to, like some clarification on some of the things they put in their bid, bid proposal. But, they were the low bidder, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars was the bid, the low bid, and they all came in pretty close to, to that number, so, with like a range of maybe fifteen thousand dollars, so they were good bids.
What did we budget for that, Sheila?
I'm sorry.
What did we budget for that?
A five hundred.
Okay, so, okay, good, right there, okay.
Just about there. The scaffolding is still up at the Armory, and I know there were some comments made about that. They were waiting on capstones, but in addition to that, when they remove the capstones, and I know I've come before this board and said this, and you'll hear this time and time again, when you, when you are doing any renovations to historical buildings, you have, you have a scope, you begin the scope of work, and as you're, as you're renovating, you uncover things, because they're, again, old buildings. So during the repointing process, they removed the capstones from the Armory, and underneath, typically when you're, when you re-point, you're just, you're just remolding or re...
The mortar, you're redoing the mortar between the bricks.
What they found was, when they pull, when they, when they removed the bricks, that underneath or behind the bricks, there was rotting and deterioration. So instead of repointing, you're actually gonna have to do some rebuilding, which is gonna add on to the cost. We've been talking to finance, I've been doing most of the talking, and they're just listening, but we're actually gonna have two phases. But we're gonna complete this project, hopefully rebuilding and replacing those capstones while the scaffolding is still there, because it's more expensive to come back and do it later. So we want to do it properly, we want to make sure it's sealed, and then there'll be a phase two, if we, if we find some additional funding, to do some of the other items that we uncovered as we were going along. So that's what's going on with the Armory. Ansonia Cup of Brass, did you mention that, or?
No, we didn't talk about that.
Okay, so we are, we have applied for two liability relief programs under both the federal and state agencies, EPA and DEEP, in case the city were to acquire the property, we want to make sure there's no liability issues. And...
Together, we have recharged Ansonia. And like one of my favorite bands, Boston, would say, it's more than a feeling. We are beginning to get more objective signs of just how successful our efforts have been here. And I am proud to announce that our assessor, Marcia Vannell, is now projecting a gross increase in our grand list next year in the amount of ninety-one million dollars. That's thanks to you and all those who believe in giving Ansonia a fighting chance. And now I would like to acknowledge some of the aldermen who will not be with us. Their presence in these halls will be missed. Their time and dedication and love for this city will never be forgotten. Sixth Ward Alderman, Pat Henry. Fifth Ward Alderman, Joan Radin. The third Ward Alderman, Joe Janetti, who you heard from, and Denise Hunt. A little later tonight, my staff is going to be discussing a tiny grant they have been working on for the Hilltop area.
Not yet, not yet, Mayor.
Mr. Henry, I guess you could say better late than never. I have a tiny sticky note that hangs in a special place in my office. It has been there for four years. The sticky note says, "I wish I could be more like Pat Henry." I have always wondered who wrote that. Maybe tonight, the author will finally come forward. Now I want to make you all aware that this year's inauguration will take place at Emmett O'Brien Technical School for the first time in the city's history, on Thursday, November thirtieth, at 7:00 P.M. Following the next day, Friday, December first, will be our annual tree lighting. Details will be on our webpage. Please remember, we have a box of toys for needy children located downstairs in City Hall. Thank you all, and God bless you. Enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions of the aldermen for Mayor Cassetti, please? Mr. Blackwell, please.
Mr. Mayor, what time does the tree lighting service start?
Uh, I think five-thirty.
Five-thirty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the mayor from the aldermen, please?
And Sid.
None? Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Corporation Council, John Marini, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Behind the scenes, in terms of legal, we're working on several items. Number one, with the city clerk, we're preparing the new ordinances that were passed, assigning numbers, and preparing a final publication of the newspaper. As you remember, they will go into effect December first by vote of the board. Additionally, we're working behind the scenes to finalize the agreement for the sale of the ATP Palmer Building. Remember, that closing will only occur once site approval has been obtained. The developer's looking to enter into a signed agreement before submitting that site approval, so that looks to be finalized within the coming month. And additionally, we're going to be sitting back down with the owners of sixty-five Main Street. This is for our police station project, and talking about what direction we can proceed in, in the best interest of the city, for the acquisition of property. Additionally, as the mayor mentioned, we have been hard at work for a slightly innovative approach to signage in the Hilltop area. Generally, it's not done to have signage specific to one area of the city versus another, but I think we have a solution that the aldermen will be happy with. Mr. President, this is all for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. Are there any questions of the aldermen for Mr. Marini, please? None? Well, okay, John, thank you. Sheila O'Malley, Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. On the grant, on the grant list, the, I just want to mention that the Ansonia Housing Authority, Steve Nacano, is going to be, excuse me, submitting an application for what's called a VASH grant. It's Veterans Assistance and Supportive Housing through HUD. And the reason that's so important is because it's going to be, if successful, it will help with veterans, not only their housing, but any of their special needs or care that is provided through the Veterans Administration. So we're hopeful we're going to get that grant, and Steve will probably be updating you as he goes through that process. We have a few grants in the hopper, but one of them is, and I've spoken about this before, is Community Connectivity Grant, which we did a safety audit. We worked hard that day. We went up and down Main Street, looking at what needed to be repaired or fixed, and what could be, what kind of aesthetic changes we could make to our Main Street. So fingers crossed, we're still waiting on that, and probably within the next couple of weeks, we'll hear on that. So that will kind of change the look and feel of Main Street, and the mayor wants to, would like to do some sidewalk reparations along with everything else, if we're fortunate enough to get that grant. Wakeley Avenue, the DOT had some additional changes they wanted to make to our bid specs, so we extended the bid to the twenty-eighth. We had about seventeen contractors that came to the pre-bid.
Mandatory.
Mandatory pre-bid. So we're hoping to get some good numbers back on the Wakeley Avenue project, and we're hoping to get that started as soon as we award, if the weather permits. Peck School, we also had a good turnout for Peck School, about thirteen contractors. Four bids were submitted. We opened up bids yesterday. Standard demolition is the apparent low bidder, although we have some questions for the apparent low bidder. So we'd like to, like some clarification on some of the things they put in their bid proposal. But they were the low bidder, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars was the bid, the low bid. And they all came in pretty close to that number, so with like a range of maybe fifteen thousand dollars. So they were good bids.
What did we budget for that, Sheila?
I'm sorry.
What did we budget for that?
A five-hundred.
Okay, so, okay, good, right there, okay.
Just about there. The scaffolding is still up at the Armory, and I know there were some comments made about that. They were waiting on capstones, but in addition to that, when they remove the capstones, and I know I've come before this board and said this, and you'll hear this time and time again, when you, when you are doing any renovations to historical buildings, you have, you have a scope, you begin the scope of work, and as you're, as you're renovating, you uncover things, because they're, again, old buildings. So during the repointing process, they removed the capstones from the Armory, and underneath, typically when you're, when you re-point, you're just, you're just remolding or re-
The mortar, you're redoing the mortar between the bricks.
What they found was when they pull, when they, when they remove the bricks, that underneath or behind the bricks, there was rotting and deterioration. So instead of repointing, you're actually going to have to do some rebuilding, which is going to add on to the cost. We've been talking to finance, I've been doing most of the talking, and they're just listening, but we're actually going to have two phases. But we're going to complete this project, hopefully rebuilding and replacing those capstones while the scaffolding is still there, because it's more expensive to come back and do it later. So we want to do it properly, and we want to make sure it's sealed. And then there'll be a phase two, if we, if we find some additional funding to do some of the other items that we uncovered as we were going along. So that's what's going on with the Armory. Ansonia Cup of Brass, did you mention that?
No, we didn't talk about that.
So we are, we have applied for two liability relief programs under both the federal and state agencies, EPA and DEEP, in case the city were to acquire the property. We want to make sure there's no liability issues. John's trying to ensure that. The Target Site requires about three-hundred thousand dollars in remediation to fill in the areas that are contaminated, and so we're working on a grant, that's another grant, actually, with the developer to get some remediation funds. But in the meantime, there's surveying work going on, and a fence will be put up, and you'll see the fill coming in for the site pads. And we're meeting with the developer this week on the Target Site. I'm sure I'm missing things, but I think that's about it. If anybody has any questions.
I think Randy was first, then Joe, then Josh.
Is tax lien sale for his Ansonia Cup of Brass still going on tomorrow?
That's tomorrow night, but probably-
So, and the strategy there, Alderman Carroll, is that when we are ready, and of course, at the, at the recommendation of this board, when we're in the liability protection program, we could proceed to obtain the full parcel through that tax, that tax sale. So the idea is to put a one-hundred percent bid on, on behalf of the city, and acquire the property through the process. So we're not prepared for that yet, because we need to be in the liability protection program, so we're likely going to continue that from tomorrow.
So this will be the second time that tax lien has been up for sale, the first time Joe, we showed up.
Hundred thousand dollars.
And this is actually, this is the property, so this is actually not the lien, this is actually a straight property auction. So the lien isn't being sold, the property is, and we don't want to entertain bids until we're ready to put the bid on.
So what's the process tomorrow night?
A continuation.
So they'll continue?
Yep. And the strategy behind that, of course, is it would be more costly and time-consuming to start over again, since we already went through the process of beginning it, makes sense to continue it until we're ready not to start over again.
Sheila, the EPA is in there? They are in there all the time, okay?
The EPA is still in there doing emergency response, they call it emergency response.
Can you please explain that?
Yeah, they're, they're looking at, their only purpose in being there is to make sure none, none of the contamination that they've learned about is spreading. So they're going to remove any contamination that they think may spread, or have, you know, has, has some tendency to spread. So they're, they're doing that, they're going to remove all that, and they hope to be out of there. They said it's a six-month process.
Is this just one part of the property, or are they looking at the whole forty-two acres?
They're looking at everything on the property that has any potential for spreading, or any potential to contaminate any other areas. They're going to remove that, so everything's contained, and there's nothing, there's no, you know, there's no fear of further contamination.
Baked.
Okay.
Mr. Janetti, please.
Yes.
Do you have a date in the riverwalk that they have? I know they're working pretty fast.
I didn't mention the, yeah, I didn't mention segment eight. They are, they are finishing up pretty quickly. And, and I believe they're going to finish before the end of December.
Awesome.
Yeah, they're, they're going really quickly. Yeah. And segment three and four is under design. Any other questions?
Joshua?
I think they, I was like, what the, used the Target remediation, are you talking about Target itself, or those new sites?
I called the, I'm sorry, I called the Target Site, so you're moving the site to Target.
So these are the ones that are being, the two they're reading about?
That adjacent parcel, so if you were to go into Target and go left, which there'll be a left-in and a right-out, that part, that parcel, man, not the Target Site has been remediated.
The development may include the parking lot, but that's not their remediation.
A portion of it, right.
Mr. Henry, please.
Is this going to be your last question, or?
I don't know. I don't know, can you hear me?
Make it a good one.
Listen, Wakeley Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, so is there any way? Chief Hale and I have discussed in the past about putting these little speed indicators up on telephone poles, whether they're solar or hardwired to the poles, if you can move them, there's different programs. I wonder if there's any money left or to be found to put a couple of these on Wakeley Avenue, if Wakeley Avenue is a good contender for such an item.
Is it, is that, the traffic authorities approve that, or?
We've discussed, there was a parent.
They're all for it. So if you two could discuss it, that would be great.
Well, we'll see, Alderman Henry.
Any other questions for Sheila O'Malley?
No, we're going to try to do that, if we have extra.
Don't hold, don't put money to what you're going to go with.
Oh, yeah, and I, and we've been working hard on a grant that Alderman Henry has been requesting for the past four years. It's a forty-dollar grant, but it did come through, we were awarded today.
I could have gave you a forty-dollar resources we had.
Yeah.
Forty-dollar grant came in. Sheila, thank you for that forty-dollar grant.
Oh, you're welcome.
There you go, Pat.
So do I put this on the back of my truck, or what? On my house? Stand at Platte Street? Thank you so much.
That is not weather resistant. It wasn't enough in the grant for that.
It's going to be over Pulaski Highway.
Yeah, right.
For the record, I hate you.
You should have had a rainbow.
I know, I know.
Paid by the work, yeah.
Yeah, we had a scrunch.
Sheila, I just have one follow-on question. Last Tuesday, Mr. Vaccaro and I were watching as a tractor trailer was being unloaded with those caps for the walls at the Armory. So I, my first thought was, oh, they were waiting the entire month of October, and we had beautiful weather, as one resident pointed out. Beautiful Mason's weather all through October, seventies, sunny, dry, and none of us saw anybody working on that scaffolding, up and down, whatever. So I saw, oh, the post caps are finally here, the wall caps are finally here. Well, now they need to do remediation to the internal parts of those walls before they can put the weight of the caps on, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you are resourcing other funding, I'm guessing? Is that what I'm reading between the lines, Sheila?
Yes, yes, I am.
All right, so we're just going to continue to pursue that, is that correct?
Yeah, they, they intend to complete the job. They want to rebuild and do everything while the scaffolding-
I mean, while you got the scaffolding up, they're there, I mean, I see the trucks and everything else there, so.
Absolutely, and then we'll be discussing the next phase.
Okay, all right, good stuff. Thank you, Sheila. Is that it for questions for Sheila? Okay. Mr. Greg Martin, do you have anything for us, or?
Yeah, I've got a couple, a couple things. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. One project in motion, a couple in the proposal stage, early research stage, but we're starting this week, the Ansonia Winter Playground at Lynette Park. We're going to be clearing back a couple hundred feet of brush on the hill, seventy-five feet wide, opening it up to sled riding sometime early December, I guess. I believe the portable skating rink will be brought down as well, fire pit will be brought in, will be built. So the plan is, after, by the time we get our first measurable snowfall, the park should be open for, you know, Ansonia residents and children to get some sleds and come on down and have some fun. In the meantime, we're also running a contest, so if anyone has children, or little nephews and nieces, or go to the city's website, there's an applicant, or entry form, contest entry form. We're hoping to give away about fifty, up to fifty flexible flyer branding sleds and flexible flyer flying saucers. So instructions on how to enter the contest are on the, on the website. Also, as we get closer, I guess, with the demolition for Peck School, I've been reading that there's some interest for residents to have, for sentimental memorabilia reasons, to have ownership of some bricks. I'm thinking maybe if there's some way, you know, there's a lot of logistics that have to do with this, but maybe all the exterior bricks could be kind of sold, a buck of brick, if any residents want them, they could, if they buy a truckload, they can build a wall in their yard, or a walkway, or just have a couple-
After they're clean.
Yeah, well, these would be the exterior bricks.
After they're clean.
After they're clean, okay. So that's one idea. I know once Wakeley Avenue, one of the first projects with that to get started is going to be taking out the trolley tracks. There's a couple of miles of trolley tracks underneath Wakeley. Might be an idea there to do something artistic with those, not necessarily the full two miles, maybe a couple hundred feet. John Tully, the city historian, had suggested what I thought was a pretty cool idea, he could, wants to commission an artist to kind of cut up parts of the track to spell like welcome to Ansonia. Maybe that could be mounted as a gateway, an entranceway somewhere in the downtown. And lastly, without getting a whole lot of detail, but I'm working on bringing, just to give you a lot of fun for the residents and for the kids for the springtime, I'm looking at, we're working to bring in a Division One baseball game. Couple of teams from the state of Connecticut, this we played at Nolan Field, and it has a lot of, a lot of good publicity behind it, a lot of momentum, a lot of, there's a lot of, there is strong interest from this team that I'm talking to, and hopefully by the next, Alderman's meeting, I'll have a little more firm details on that. And this is something that will take place late April, early May, and we could really rally the community around to come out to Nolan Field and watch a Division One baseball game. That's probably as close as you're going to get to getting a professional team coming in to play here. And it actually does have a historical connection, because back in the nineteen-thirties, believe it or not, in Nolan Field, the St. Louis Cardinals played an exhibition game here against, you know, an amateur team from the Ansonia. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Martin?
Greg, can you keep me in the loop on the baseball games, so I can coordinate with the league?
Oh, absolutely, yes, definitely, that's, that would be a big attraction to have all the kids come out to that.
Is the sled thing just, you're going to pull a kid's name out of the hat?
Yeah, they're, these are mail-in entries only, want to do the old-fashioned way instead of the online stuff, so they fill out an input, entry blank, mail it to us, they're going to go into a big box. They're going to pull out up to fifty, so.
Mr. Blackwell, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to hear about the baseball thing. My only concern is, and maybe you could work on it, is could we get fields for our own people to play on first, before we go inviting other people to play on the one field that we have?
In terms of-
In terms of baseball.
Yeah.
Yeah, we only have one field. So my concern is-
This would not preempt or, this would not, you know, we're not going to kick the high school out.
No, and then, and then suggest that you were going to do that. All I'm suggesting to you is to just get enough fields for our kids to play on, before you bring in these other teams to play on the one field that we do have. Thanks.
Mr. Martin, Lynette Park, North State, and Curtis, right?
Yes, Dr. Crowley and North State.
Right, Crowley, you're right. This is also from Mr. Mike DeLassio. You talked about a fire pit, right? I've been getting complaints for a couple of years now, and my fault for not talking enough to Mr. DeLassio, but there's some trees behind Curtis Street there, am I saying that, is it Curtis Street, or?
Crowley.
Crowley, thank you, I get my Cs mixed up. Behind Crowley Street there, that need to come down, right on the edge of our property, so. Need any firewood to start knocking some of those trees down, the residents will be applauding you, okay? So one behind Mr. Sexton's house, actually. Sir, Mr. Carroll.
I do have a question about the fire pit under the last administration. I attended a Board of Alder meeting, and the Board of Alder banned fire pits, and they banned chimneys.
Chimneys.
So could you look into that? Because they banned it, you can't do that.
I don't think they were banned. I think they were just-
They made them both regulated to not be so close to certain buildings. I'm not mistaken.
We'll look into it, yeah. No, we got to know by what the Fire Marshal says.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Martin.
Okay, thank you.
Richie Beshear, Controller, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to congratulate all those who've been re-elected, and wish well, and thank those that are not going to be with us any longer. Work continues on the audit. Auditor and Finance are still working on our final numbers, and hopefully we're going to be done very soon with this. Still a few items that were taken off the list. Current budget's being reviewed, and we may need to have a correction based on state budget recently passed, we're going to have more to follow on that. Finance is preparing the packets to send out for the department request for the fiscal year eighteen, nineteen budget, so that process is starting to wind up. We will need to approve the mill rate resolution for the motor vehicle bills and the mailing to the taxpayers, which I'll go into in a minute. And just as an aside, vote did not meet this month, so there will be no vote approvals that this board will approve on that. In terms of the motor vehicle bills, I know everybody's been waiting to pay their motor vehicle bill, but now that the state budget's been finalized, motor vehicle cap has been set at thirty-nine mils, not the projected thirty-seven or thirty-two that we've been talking about for the last six months. So that has no impact on our, our bills that are going to be issued out, so. There'll be no cap for us, and so we're looking to make the mill rate the same as our resident, as our housing and personal property, at thirty-seven point thirty-two mils. My recommendations on this are as follows. I have this board vote approve the final mill rate for motor vehicle bills at thirty-seven point thirty-two mils. I'm suggesting that the bills be issued with a due date of January one, two thousand eighteen, payable without interest until February one, two thousand eighteen. That's a normal month of interest free. I'm also suggesting that we send out the bills for December one, or early in December. This will allow those individuals that may want to pay their bill in the calendar year two thousand seventeen, for a tax write-off, to be able to do so, they'll have the bill available, and they can pay it in December, even though it's not due until February first. And I would suggest that we include a mailer stuffer to explain all of the details of this, so the residents are fully aware of what we're attempting to accomplish. Supplemental motor vehicle bills, those will still go out in January, as they normally will. I believe they're still working on those, so that's what I have, and I have, I think Alderman Carroll has a copy of this motion that we, I would like the board to approve on a mill rate of thirty-seven point thirty-two.
All right, Richie, if I could just freeze you right there, while it's still fresh in everybody's mind, unless you have a question. Mr. Vaccaro, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. That the Board of Aldermen of the City of Ansonia hereby approves a tax rate of thirty-seven point thirty-two mils on the dollar to be and said, to be in the same as hereby assessed on the ratable estate for motor vehicles and supplemental motor vehicles of the City of Ansonia, last completed being the grand list of two thousand sixteen, and the full bill will be due on January first, comma, two thousand eighteen, and payable without interest before February first, two thousand eighteen, and that the bills be mailed early December two thousand seventeen, so that those wishing to pay their bill before December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, for tax purposes, may do so.
Second by Mr. Castelitis, discussion. Mr. Patrick Henry.
So should we mention, either on that document or a separate one, that to say to Connecticut capped at thirty-nine, and point out we are paying under that?
We'll put that in the stuffer that goes with the bills.
Very good, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Appalled? So moved. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Beshear. Anything else for us, or?
Just a couple of quick highlights on the effects of the new state budget that just came out, that we're going to be needing to discuss. The net impact of this is they're giving us the same amount of money as we got fiscal year seventeen, fiscal year eighteen. The biggest differential is that some of it is now designated, or, yeah, what's the word I want?
Mandated.
Well, is restricted versus unrestricted. So in other words, we didn't have LoCIP last year, but this year, we're going to have three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of LoCIP money that's included in the seventeen point five million they're giving us. Well, LoCIP is good, but I can't take and apply it to things we've already budgeted for, it will be an additional grant. Additionally, the ECS funding, which we did not plan on getting additional money for the Alliance Grant, because we have reached year five, they're giving us an additional one point five million in ECS funding. So again, that's designated dollars versus unrestricted dollars that we have to deal with. So we're trying to go through the list, we're going to be talking about how we can apply it. We lost the MRSA grants, they gave us additional grant for stabilization. There's a lot of pluses and minuses, and we're still putting the pieces of the puzzle together. We'll be coming to the board, we're going to have to modify our budget to some extent. So the state's also allowed the ability for the board to go back and reopen the budgets to correct for the changes that they made within it. So note that it's out there, we'll be looking at some of the pieces, they're still making clarifications. I think the latest one we just heard was that the renters rebate program, they're going to put half of that, the city's going to have to pay for half of that now, we weren't, we didn't do that in the past, so. Lot of little changes and nuances, and that there will be changes coming in the future. will be changes coming in the future. One of the big things that the Gentile who came here yesterday to go through the budgetary process was explaining regionalization will be something that's real coming in the future. Those are things we really need to start looking at for various functions and/or projects. So, in any event, that will be, that will have more information coming in the near future.
Any questions for Mr. Bishiro, please? Any questions for Mr. Bishiro? Wow. Chief Hale, good evening, please.
President, thank you. Couple of things really quick, Mayor, I think, go over, Henry wrote that note, that's just my opinion.
Did some investigative work.
December 1, winter parking rules begin. We're on the odd side this year, unless you're on one of those 30 streets that has special rules. Makes our city so special. This Friday, at Stop &amp; Shop, we're doing our 13th annual Stuff a Jeep for Thanksgiving. So, there are two different charitable groups that'll be getting that. We've got overwhelming support from the public in the past. So, that'll run from, I think it's 10:00 to 3:00 or 9:00 to 3:00 Friday, Stop &amp; Shop. Doing that again in December before Christmas, and we're also going down to Target. I think this is our third or fourth year of going to Target, and it's called Shop, Christmas Shopping with a Cop, and providing gifts and whatnot for kids and families who really need that. So, I don't have a date on that yet. So, again, this Friday, Stop &amp; Shop, that should be on the, should have been on Twitter and Facebook. Finally, to the members of the board, congratulations to those who are coming back, to those who are, who are going. From the Police Department, my own personal feelings, thank you for your support over the years. It's been, it's been great to work with you. One in particular, I've been sitting here for, and I walked in late, so I get to embarrass you again, but I've been sitting here for 17 years, and there's only one person that's been sitting here longer than I have, and it's Joe Janetti. So, I want to thank you for all your support. Thank you.
Actually, Church is better than Martin.
She started when she was 16. Any questions for Chief Hale? Randy, please.
I did a ride along last night.
Scary.
I now know where, not to run a stop sign. Run a red light, not to have a cellphone. I had a great time. Where Alderman lived, and wasn't allowed to go on the speaker, Alderman Castle, where Jesus, the police come out with their hands after you're surrounded, wasn't allowed to do that. But I'd like to read this. So, please, please give this to the police commissioners, you and me, and when I do a ride along. I, Alderman Randolph Carroll, last night, went a ride along with Officer Luna. I spent eight hours with him from 3:00 to 11:00 p.m. During our time together, I found him efficient, courteous, and professional in his duties. I was very impressed that when he saw teenagers, or any teenager, he stopped, he knows their names, he knows where they live, and he's got a great rapport with them. I think it's his source, but don't put that in there. I think it's very important to have a great rapport with the police, to have a great rapport with children, and he does. I believe Officer Luna is a great asset, not only to our police force, but to the City of Ansonia. I, as an Alderman for the city and a taxpayer, am very proud, and I mean that sincerely, that we have a fine officer like him responding, representing our city. Alderman Randolph Carroll.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Hale, please? Josh Stewart?
Is it true that after last night, they shortened the ride-alongs to one hour?
Yeah, there was.
Wow, brutal.
I'm going to go in for each cocker we have. I'm going to take you with me next time. We stopped at Subway for dinner, too. Didn't see you there. Didn't see you.
You're our best marketing tool.
Any other questions for Chief Hale?
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience, Mr. Michael DeLassio, Public Works, some going-ons?
I'll give a brief. Will it be number one?
Yeah, Mr. DeLibro and I have a bet, so, quick.
Oh, yeah? I'll make it quick. You know, work is coming. We've got the trucks finally getting ready to go. Got the powder all set. Sand printers are all operated. We have salt and sand in the shed, so if we have a storm tonight, we're ready to go. That's ready to go for everybody. Started Christmas decorations, believe it or not. We started decorating the park today, because it takes about a month. We've got to get ready for that. They've got a bag leaf still. They've got about 200 bags every couple of days. Bulk's still going on till the end of the month, December 1st. Well, we had our, had this waste day last Saturday, which was a great turnout. We had like 439 cars, one of the biggest turnouts we had. We only had 194 cars. Derby had 108, and Seymour had 137, so it was a good turnout. I like to try to keep this, maybe we can do it twice a year. People are always asking throughout the year, we've got somewhere to dump motor oil, paint, all different pesticides, so I think it'd be a good idea to maybe do it twice a year. It's 12 towns that they go along with it, they split it, so it's a third each town, so it's not too bad. And it keeps the pesticides, a lot of the cars, the paint, these still, people dumping motor oil down a catch basin, so you can still catch it once in a while, so it might be a good idea to do it twice a year instead of once. And other than that, the guys are out there still putting curbing, still cutting some brush on the sides of the roads, so we'll be ready for next spring, and just finish our paving, put the rest of the acres in this week. We just, 14-year-old just here with a great year. Finish up curbing, and that's about it. Get ready for the season. Ready for the season.
Good job, Mike. Any questions? Mr. Castelitis?
The Mead School Trails in need of repair. Do you know when you guys are going to start that or when it might possibly be done?
The Mead School Trails?
Yes.
That's part of Allison's deal there. There's a couple walkways we have to repair. We haven't got any there. We did some clearing of woods, but we haven't taken care of the wood yet. It'll be sometime before a snowfall. We've got a few spots that are in dire need of, not springtime, but we build a few of them.
Okay, thank you.
That?
I already know. It'll be done, hopefully next week we'll get something done for you.
Oh, thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Carroll?
I want to thank you the two years that I've been Alderman, picking up all the stuff that people have dumped on the street. Streets in my, in my ward, Liberty Street this week, people dumped a whole bunch of stuff on, and also Third Street, you picked it up without me calling. Excellent. Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Mr. DeLassio? Mr. DeLassio, I was talking about regionalization. You seem to have already started your own regionalization problem. I was down in your workplace today, and there's a nice big Derby scooper, or whatever you call that thing that Rich was driving, so would you want to enlighten us? You have friendship with Derby, or?
Actually, we do. For the last year and a half, actually, we've been helping each other out. There's times that Derby had, say their sweeper's down, I'll even borrow a sweeper, and then borrow it. Our machine's down this week, so we called Derby to have a spare machine. They gave us their machine. Their salt and sand, as you know, is in our salt shed, so I got them this year to pound our Riverwalk, because they bought a new machine, it cost them $100,000 for a track-up machine, to do the Riverwalk. So, I asked them for, you know, because you guys have put your salt and sand, you can help us out on the Riverwalk, so they're going to take care of our Riverwalk. When they do it, they're going to come right across and take care of ours, which saves us a lot of time, labor, a lot of labor time, so. In between everything else, we borrowed our trailer today. We had to bring our machine up to H.O. Penn. They have a big heavy-duty trailer. We don't have one. So, what about, we're going to have to borrow one, rent one, grab theirs. It works out great. Between Derby and Ansonia, we've been doing a lot of public works, so it's been, actually saves us money, saves them money, which works out great. I like to see other departments do a lot, do the same thing. Go work.
Good job, Mike. You're always thinking ahead.
Thank you.
Any other questions, you Alderman? Thank you, Michael, good job.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
You're going to be missed, the ones that go longer will be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Arms, Mr. Blackwell, is Jared Hean, or you're going to cover that in committee assignment reports?
If he has anything, he's welcome to speak. I'll cover Arms, I'm on the report.
Okay, Jared? Okay, back to Alderman Blackwell. Okay, it's back on you, Dan. Okay. Unless I miss somebody, that wraps up public official session. Committee reports. Finance Committee, and Mr. McCarroll, you want to?
Yes, and it's just those absent, so I would like to make a motion to pay all bills if I'm to be accurate and correct.
Is there a second by Mr. DeLibro? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Public Works, I think Mr. DeLassio covered it. Thank you, sir. Arms Committee, Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, sir. This is the monthly report for October 2017 for the Arms Report. As far as calls for responses, Arms responded to 320 calls this month. Looks like about 38 of them are mutual aid. 29 went to Derby, eight to Seymour, one to Shelton. And Griffin Hospital was the highest receiver of our patients at 164, followed by Yale New Haven at 22, Yale Children's Hospital at 15. Those were the top three. As far as billing, the revenue for this month that was generated was $53,910.89. And of the 320 calls, we only passed one. That went to mutual aid, and that was on a second call when the first ambulance was tied out. So, I think we did pretty good covering the calls, and I believe this may have been the busiest or one of the busiest months ever. It was the busiest month we ever had. Everything went well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. WPCA, no report tonight. Fire Commission, Mr. Pat Henry?
Ansonia's bravest are still hard at it, day and night, all weather. 59 total calls. Some of the highlights, motor vehicle assists, nine. Natural slash propane gas leak, six. False alarms, eight. Miscellaneous public service, good intent calls, nine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ordnance Committee, Mr. Randy Carroll, anything for the good of the order? No? Okay, no report tonight. Housing Authority, Mr. Carroll, do you have anything?
I was talking to the chairman, and, or actually, he was talking to me, and he said they purchased a house on May Street because they had to spend money or something out of the fund. I didn't get a chance to talk to him because I couldn't get to the last meeting, but they did purchase a house to use up whatever money the state would have taken, the federal government would have taken back to do it, so.
Are they making improvements to that house, or?
I would assume they're fixing it up.
Do you know what number?
I think I do, so let me look it up, because I think Steve said something. I forgot about it, but I'm going to, you're right. Well, I just met him at the election, so he was telling me.
If you just let us, I mean if...
Yeah, I'll get the number for you.
Because I know that, well, there's a grant that Mr. Marini worked on five years ago. Actually, where North State Street begins, at the foot of where the old, old high school used to be, and they redid two homes there, two-family and a three-family, did a really, really nice job on it. Richie, you seem to remember it. But if, you do the same thing on Main Street.
You mean the housing rehab?
Yeah.
Yep.
Right behind Fire Chief Heeman's house. John, you did that?
The housing rehabilitation?
Yeah, what was that, where North State Street begins, right below where the old, old, old high school used to be, there's just a granite wall there now, and they redid the two houses there. You were a key part of that, two-family house and a three-family house, right? They redid them nice, nice?
Yeah.
And hopefully, the same thing can occur on Main Street.
This is not rehab. This is Ansonia Housing is buying it.
Okay.
Not rehab.
All right, what?
Nothing to do with grants or rehab.
I understand, but usually when they purchase a home, they improve it, bring it up to code, make it nicer or better?
They have, what Jones is talking about is they have a special fund that they can, they designate to rehab, so.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yep, actually, similar, but it's a housing authority fund.
Okay, good.
And I'm going to get that.
That's a good thing. Okay, if you could just get us that address. Okay, anything else from the Housing Authority, Joan, or?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other committees I might have missed or overlooked? None? Okay, thank you. Municipal Reports, both recommendations, we just have this one thing that Mr. Bishiro already explained to us. Just need a motion, Mr. McCarroll?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to accept the report.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Josh Stewart, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. McCarroll. Let's see, and those comptroller approvals as well, including that, right?
Yes.
Land Use Department Report, we also have that in our mailbox. Mr. McCarroll?
Mr. President, I'd just like to make note of the fact that the market took in $13,402.85 last month.
Okay, is there a second on that? Mr. McCarroll, Mr. Castelitis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Mr. Castelitis?
Motion to accept the tax collectors' report and request for refunds in the amount of $3,172.25.
Is there a second on that, please? Dr. Josh Stewart, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moves. Accidents and claims? None, so we move along. Resignations. We have one resignation here, Diana Maurice. She was on, she worked for Rhonda Perini on the, it's only Board of Appeals, I believe, and she's basically moved out of town, and seeing as she is not a resident, she will no longer be able to maintain that function, so she enjoyed the opportunity to serve on the Ansonia Board of Appeals. Regards, Diana Maurice.
Much to accept that resignation and send her a letter of thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second on that? Joe Yawman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. We have some appointments by the mayor. Cultural Commission, let me just read through them, and you can look for your neighbors. Cultural Commission, three-year term, Crystal Guntarts, Lane Drive, entertain a motion. Mr. DeLibro?
Make a motion to accept Crystal Guntarts.
I don't, maybe Mr. Blackwell does, I don't know. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. Renee Simpson, 180 Westfield, Fifth Ward. Joe Yawman, is there a second by?
Second.
Lord McCarroll, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. George Putman? Dr. Josh Stewart?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCarroll, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Historical Commission, two-year terms, Thomas Clifford, Westwood Road. Rich Castellitis, second by Joe Yaman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Catherine Wilkins, Hotchkiss Terrace. Anybody? Martin Dempsey, seconded by Patrick Henry, all those in favor? Opposed, so moved. Mary Gibson, back to Elaine Drive, Seventh Ward, I believe. Mr. Blackwell, second by Mr. DeLibro, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. School Building Commission, two-year term, Mr. McCarroll?
So moved.
Mr. Carroll and Mr. Castellitis, all those in favor? Opposed, so moved. Mr. McCarroll, abstention? Okay, thank you. That also includes Bev Tidmarsh, Fifth Ward. Mr. Joe Yaman, Patrick Henry, all those in favor? Opposed, so moved. Nina Phipps, Rockwood, Randy Carroll, and Patrick Henry. All those in favor? Opposed, so moved. Bill Nimmens, Blaski Highway, Rich Castellitis, and Martin Dempsey. All those in favor? Opposed, so moved. William Alireba, Third Ward. Frank DeLibro, almost said Tracy. And seconded by Mr. Blackwell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Jack Valet, Hoinski Way. Mr. Blackwell, seconded by Mr. Josh Stewart, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Mr. John Izzo, Shoto Drive. We've got Mr. Blackwell and Mr. DeLibro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Mr. Frank DeLibro. Rich Castellitis, Mr. Blackwell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. One abstention, Mr. DeLibro. Thank you. Mr. Dean King, First Ward. Mr. Randy Carroll and Patrick Henry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. And Mr. Thomas Henry. Mr. Patrick Henry?
So moved.
So moved. And Rich Castellitis, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay, appointments. No resolutions, no ordinance. Any new business? Joan, rate it, please.
Okay, on East Main Street.
Right.
I was over there this morning, and I was told last night that Fitzpatrick has their used cars parked on the sidewalk in front of their new business. And people were made to walk in the street, or had to walk in the street, because there was no place on the sidewalk for them to walk. If we could ask Mr. Fitzpatrick if they could move their cars back enough, so people would not have to walk in the street. Also, I read the contract that we have with Fitzpatrick. And in the contract, it says, and everybody else would like to read it, I'm sure Mr. Marinie would get it for them, we can give them a 30-day notice to move their cars. And I would like to make a motion that we give them the 30-day notice from December 1st, so they're out January 1st, so that we can get our spaces back, the ones that they put in while they were remodeling. And the people who are gonna be shopping, or eating, or whatever, going to Banquo's or any of those places on East Main Street would not have to walk in the street, and would not have to walk as far.
So, your motion is on the 30-day notice?
A 30-day notice on December 1st, so that they would be out by January 1st, and the people would not have to walk a half a mile to get to where they're going.
Is there a second on that? I don't hear a second.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, there's something else I'd like to say. I would like to thank the people of.
I'll second it.
I don't want, you know, it's.
You have a motion on the floor?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. J.
But he said it wasn't seconded, so.
All right. What's the pleasure in voting, folks?
Discussion.
Discussion, of course.
I just wish JP was here. There's a contract, and I don't know if we'd need a motion and a mandate, we might just take a phone call to have them say, oh, okay, sorry about that, and move it. I don't know that the Board of Aldermen needs to take action. That was just my thought.
But I think it's because you have to give them notice, and I think it has to be through the Board of Aldermen, because we're the ones that gave them the okay to park there.
Was that? Mr. Car?
Yes, thank you. It definitely has to be looked at.
It's in the contract. If nobody read the contract, Mr. Marinie gave it to me at the last meeting, and I did read it. I asked for it for six months.
It definitely needs to be looked at. I don't want to kick a, excuse me, I don't want to kick a businessman out of his, out of a parking lot, please. I don't want to kick him out of his.
But you want people to shop.
One more time, guys. We can both go, just one more time. Lori, go ahead.
I don't want to kick a businessman out of his, who's been in town longer than, forever. I don't want to kick him out of that parking lot without some further study on this.
Joan?
Whatever you want to do is fine. It should have been done six months ago, and since nobody, I asked the mayor three or four times for the contract, and Mr. Marinie just finally gave it to me at the last meeting. I'm sorry, nobody else stopped him but me. So, if that's what you want to do, that's fine with me.
This is where we are. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second. How would you like to proceed?
I'd like to call a roll-call vote.
So, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a roll-call vote. Roll-call vote has been requested.
Randy Carroll?
Yes.
McCarroll?
No.
Ginetti?
No.
Dempsey?
No.
Castellitis?
No.
Yaman?
No.
Raven?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Stewart?
No.
Blackwell?
No.
DeLibro?
No.
Tripp?
No.
Two yes, ten no.
Okay, motion does not carry.
Okay, I have something else.
Yes, please. All are rated.
I would like to thank the people of Ansonia for allowing me to serve them for six years. I hope I did many things, I got many phone calls, I made many phone calls. I do hope I served them well. It was a pleasure, and I hope I helped in some way. Thank you.
You did, Joe. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else with new business? Mr. Carroll, please.
I have two things. I don't know if you need this in a motion, but I think the Aldermen that are leaving should be able to take.
Well, they will. They will. Yeah, they usually do.
And the second thing is, I appreciate everybody that voted for me, but something has come up. I'm trying my resignation, that's something I.
Interesting. Well, just, I guess the mayor's office will need a letter from you, so.
Thank you, Randy.
If you want after this reading, if you want this.
All right, is there any other new business? Mr. Patrick Henry?
Yes, if you would please indulge me, I've written down some parting comments, and I'm gonna read from it, because I don't want to skip anything, I'm sorry. Sorry to prolong your night. You can leave if you'd like. Congratulations to Mayor Cassetti in regards to his historic reelection as Republican for a third consecutive term. He and his team of Sheila O'Malley and John Paul Marinie, in conjunction with this board, have done an excellent job of bringing back, bringing Ansonia back to life, and the people have recognized that, putting them back to work for two more years. I'm sure they will live up to the demanding expectations of Ansonia's thankful residents. Good luck to new and returning Aldermen. I envy the challenges, and work ahead as you, as you, as well as this new beginning, work ahead of you as well as this new beginning, and look forward to enjoying your results from the sidelines. I will especially miss telling the mayor, I told you so. I'm very proud to have been a member of this board. It's important and necessary work that only gets done via a volunteer spirit. My philosophy has always been, someone has to do it, so why not me? And I salute all of you for your dedication, and send my best to your families who put up with all that goes along with your service. The sacrifice of family time makes them great Americans. I'd especially like to thank my wife Cheryl, who's been my closest advisor, editor, and supporter. Everything I get to do is because she makes it possible. Since she hasn't thrown me out yet, I'm definitely going to keep her. Serving the people of Sixth Ward, and with all of you in this room, for two terms has been a privilege. I chose not to run for reelection this year due to a busy schedule, as well as being a fan of term limits. Happily, my replacement, Kevin O'Brien, enthusiastically stepped up and actually was the highest Aldermanic vote-getter this year, but not as high as I got last time. I trust our returning Sixth Ward Alderman Josh Stewart, and Kevin will keep up the IQ level and good looks that the Sixth Ward residents have become accustomed to. Now that the Board of Aldermen will be entirely made up of Republicans, I would remind my fellow charter-revision Democratic friends of yesteryear, I think your wife was one, of my endorsement of term limits on the board, as well as political minority representation on the board. At the time, the Democrats held a majority in these chambers. I warn that they may like how things were then, but beware the day that it's an all Republican board. So, here we are, and I wonder what they think of my ideas now. On the heels of a municipal primary this year and a presidential primary last year, I ask all unaffiliated voters to consider re-registering with a party, so that they may become members of a political town committee and/or be able to vote in primaries. In addition, I encourage those who do not vote to stop letting your neighbors make decisions for you. As a member of the American Legion, I would suggest that the easiest way to honor and support our troops is to exercise your duty to vote. Going forward, as a former Alderman and a resident, I'd like to see the following. An agenda for the Board of Aldermen, listing its schools for the next two years. Whereas the Board works hand-in-hand with City Hall, this Board of 14 members is a separate entity from the mayor's office, it should have its own set of goals. I hope that would include designing a new city logo, as I mentioned in the past. Mr. Phelps either needs a more accurate rendition, preferably not frowning or a complete redesign, reflecting positivity. Schools, three things for the schools. A long-term plan to acquire adjacent properties around the middle school for eventual new construction with room for a playground, a field, onsite parking, and the Board of Education. And when I say long-term, I mean 20 to 50 years. Two, discussion with the Board of Education regards to having their budget go to referendum, such as Seymour does. In addition to enhance their autonomy from the Board of Aldermen, which they relish, they could also do their own billing and collecting from residents. Three, a dialogue with our state representatives to enact legislation requiring that municipalities from which a special education student moves from be required to pay for the full year that child's education cost to the new school district, so that cities have sufficient time to plan for financing them without affecting their current budget. Next, business fee for absentee landlords. I brought this up before. Absentee landlord residential housing will only continue to grow if left unchecked. Already an added burden to city's resources, especially to schools, introducing an absentee landlord rental business fee will help offset the costs of city services that multiple dwelling properties create as a whole. I would suggest for a discussion, a $100 per unit, per month fee. Additionally, I would suggest absentee landlords pay the entire cost of public school education